July 9th Town Hall, we're doing our Town Halls now twice a month. We'll be doing the, I guess it's the second and the fourth Thursdays of each month. If that changes, we'll certainly let the community know. And tonight, we've decided to focus on the topic of the 2020 Census. And then also just to have a general Q and A, we'll do a little discussion about the new order that's going to be effective for our county on the 13th, and then just open it up for questions or comments from our community. And so I've asked Kristi Thomas to join us, and she's a housing technician. And one of the areas that she's been working on is our Census amongst many other things. And Census 2020, as with all the censuses, are very, very, very important for our communities in counting the number that we have in our city. And there's a direct correlation between the count and funding. And so with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Kristi. She'll share a little bit more about the Census. And then we have joining us someone that she will introduce. And with that, Kristi.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Kristi Thomas, Housing Program Coordinator for the city. And I'm so happy that the city is dedicating tonight's Town Hall to the 2020 Census, because we all know that it's so important that everyone is counted. The Census count has always been important to the city, and this year was no different. So when we learned that the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, in collaboration with the county, were offering grants dedicated to Census outreach, the city applied. I'm happy to report that the city did receive a grant. Oops. And the city did receive a grant, and our outreach team gathered and created an outreach plan that was mostly dedicated to large and small scale events. And these events were in collaboration with our local community-based organizations and our faith-based community, and some of our local schools, and our local RV parks and mobile home parks. We also plan to set up kiosks to take the census at many of our city facilities and our local organizations. So when the COVID-19 pandemic shelter in place happened, our team was tasked to switch gears and to dedicate most of our outreach to more of kind of a virtual outreach. So some of the ways that we have accomplished this is by placing a census message on our downtown city electronic bulletin board, by posting on Instagram and Facebook, by dedicating a page about the Census on our city website, by emailing residents with Census messages, by posting Census videos made by our council members, by mailing out flyers with our water utility bill and our business license renewal reminders, and also including flyers in our grocery bags at our local food banks. We also are still encouraging our faith-based community and local community-based organizations to outreach to their clients and their parishioners, and encourage all of them to continue to take the Census. And our most current efforts are now largely focused on phone banking, where we've dedicated one staff member and five volunteers calling to remind folks to take the Census. And yes, we can always use more volunteers, so if you're interested, shoot me an email. Lastly, before I hand the presentation off to Nick Kuata with the county Census team, I'm really happy and proud to report that even with the COVID setback, our city Census response rate at 75.8% is already higher than it was in 2010. So that's great news. So now I'm happy to hand this off to Nick Kuata with the county Census team.
Thank you, Kristi. And I think it's fabulous that even though you guys are one of the top performing cities, not only in Santa Clara County, but across the state as a whole, you still devote time to the Census. That really shows you're in it to win it. And I love that about y'all. And I think this is really telling about how great our community can be when we all come together to really make a difference for the future. So as Kristi mentioned, my name is Nick Kuata. I am the manager for the Office of the Census. And I used to work in nonprofit before I joined the county Census team. So it's always been near and dear to my heart around working around the Census, because I have seen its impact on communities firsthand. You know, the firm that I used to work for before, you know, used Census data to evoke change within city councils across the county to really make sure that we are fairly represented, not only in appearance, but in the diversity of opinions as well. So you know, Census really has far-reaching effects, and a lot of it hits the wallet. So I'm really happy that we're able to talk about this today. I am going to switch screens if hopefully that's okay with folks. Oh, except it's been disabled, so I can't do that quite yet.
Nick, can you just one sec?
Thank you.
You're good to go.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right. So why don't we start with... It's not showing up here. Maybe I can start with this one. So this is actually the self-response rate that I have listed right now, 75.9%, 75.3% back in 2010. So you're already doing a fantastic job. I would like to remind folks, and I'll have a slide showing this later on, that even in the best-performing communities, however, there's still about one in five of us who have not responded to the Census. So still a lot more work to be done. Those calls are really what's making a difference, because we can't have those face-to-face conversations. So props to y'all, but like I said, more work still to be done. Hopefully, folks can still see this. If I make it big, can you see? Oops, maybe it's slideshow here. Can everybody see this presentation okay?
We are seeing the Census 2020 Hard to Count map.
Oh, okay. So I don't know if I can switch this around. Let's see here. Sorry, one sec. Zoom is not first nature to me, apologies about that. Let's see, pause, a share, a new share. Here we go. How about that now? Can you see that?
It's the same.
It's the same thing.
You might have to stop sharing and restart.
Got it, okay.
Sometimes it's a little finicky.
Got it, thank you for the help here. How about that?
There we go, 2020 Census.
That's the one, that's the one, okay. So to jump right into it, this is a partnership across the board with a number of different community-based organizations and directly with the city here. You know, the city was one of the very few cities that stood up to really make sure that all its residents were counted. I'm going to cover a number of different topics, really just the baseline stuff around the Census, you know, what it is, what's it for, the process itself, and then of course the county piece as well. So I'll move quickly, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. So first and foremost, what is the Census for? It's so important, it's in the very first lines of our Constitution under Article 1, Section 2. The main purpose is to count people every 10 years to make sure that we have the proper apportionment of U.S. representatives across the nation. So political power directly tied to being counted. You know, a lot of our communities have been using the messaging, you know, get counted because your voice depends on it. You know, if you're not seen by the federal government, not only are you getting a lack of funds distributed to your area based on those Census numbers, but you literally don't have someone on your side who understands exactly what your community needs. So this is one of the primary pieces to the puzzle. The other piece, of course, is about $675 billion distributed annually. We get about $500 million annually to the county alone, $76 billion to important California state resources like Section 8 housing, school lunches. My daughter goes to Title I school, or at least she used to go to Title I school before we closed the doors for COVID. So I think this is the thing that we're most pressing with communities, make sure they understand, they correlate the two things between Census and the circumstances. Now, I think a lot of us have had a lot of other thoughts in our minds, other than the Census, like COVID-19, like the Black Lives Matter movement that's been sweeping the nation. We have to understand that these things are all tied together. You know, if we're looking at a tremendous economic downturn, those safety net programs that are funded via the Census dollars are going to be all the more important, and we don't get another shot at it in the next 10 years. If we were to freeze frame everything that we've taken so far in the Census, the 70% or so here in Santa Clara County, we would lose millions and millions of dollars because of those lack of responses. So we really want to make sure that people are responding to their utmost. Just a quick wheel of some of the programs that are funded via Census. It's unfortunate, because we don't have a very clear picture on exactly how much individually people get. We guess it's a little bit under $2,000 per person, but the real news is it's not as simple as saying they count an individual and that you get X amount of dollars back. They actually also do a lot of matching at the state level based on those Census dollars. So you know, every individual not counted is at least $2,000. It's possibly quite a bit more. But for all the most important programs, WIC, Head Start, Section 8, like I had mentioned before, Medi-Cal, all these programs are tied to Census. So if you aren't responding to the Census, you're just shrinking that pool of available funds. So we're really trying to impact folks and say, hey, listen, even if you're not using the programs now, don't you want to have those programs for yourself and your community later down the road? So that's the direct tie to people's wallets right there. This was our map that we were using before COVID hit, before the Census started being taken. The redder the area, the more likely those folks would not be counted. They are called, what we use HTC are Hard to Count. The number of different variables to determine HTC are pretty vast. It could be as simple as, you know, are you homeless or not? Are you a renter? What languages do you speak at home? You know, do you have any disabilities? LGBTQ+, a number of different categories that would make subcategories much harder to count. So later on the slide, I'll tell you what we did to kind of solve that problem. As of July, this is the self-response rate map, and the darker the color, the better you're doing. So as you can see, Morgan Hill, quite dark, which is really, really good. Of course, the lighter the areas, and the more orange the areas, the still, the number of folks we need to count, we are about second in the state right now to be counted as top counties across California. But you're still missing quite a few people, some as many as three out of five folks missing from the count still in the orange areas. So we are still hard at work trying to persuade those folks that they really still need to be counted. In terms of the process itself, there are a number of different parties involved. The U.S. Census Bureau, first and foremost, they are the federal arm. This is a federal count done across the nation. The state of California has created its own complete count office, as well as your local government here. So Santa Clara County has thrown its hat in the ring, as well as the city of Morgan Hill, and the city of San Jose has also thrown their hat in as well. So we are all working together to really make sure we get a complete count in this chaotic time. There are new ways to respond to the Census unlike before. Unlike before, which was a paper form, we actually now have a mostly online digital platform that we've been using. So my 2020census.gov, you can go there right now, fill it out. I did it myself in less than four minutes, and I've got a crying baby, that's the reason why I'm doing this presentation in the nursery. So I definitely think it's something that's easy to do. You know, we heard a lot of feedback from folks like, oh, I don't have time. You got time, it's only four minutes, and it's going to, you know, decide the next 10 years of your life. There's an on-phone language service as well. If you'd like, you can actually call in in 14 different languages, and they actually have a number of different supplemental languages as well, but they do have to call you back in those other supplemental languages. I think it's up to 52 or 54 languages now. There are paper forms available as well, and they were supposedly sent out in the last couple of weeks. So if you prefer the paper form, you can still do that. Unfortunately, it's a little bit harder to get these forms. You would only get them initially if you were in a very urban area, or right now, if you have not yet returned the Census form, you could get a paper form. And the last way is actually the motivating factor, and part of the reason I'm here to talk to you tonight, is enumerators. So enumerators are people actually working for the federal government, and they will go around knocking on people's doors. So if you don't want to knock on your door, just take the four-minute survey now, and you can avoid all of that. You know, there's still a very small possibility that you could get an enumerator knocking on your door for quality assurance purposes, but if you fill it out, you're pretty much guaranteed that they won't come visit you. And I know for a fact that a lot of folks in my neighborhood don't want to get visited by anybody right now. So if you want to avoid that, get the Census done right now online or via paper form, if you haven't, if you've received that. In terms of the county plan, as I mentioned before, we have lots of different variables that make folks hard to count. So what we did was create different subcommittees around the different categories that would make one hard to count. So we've got a cities and neighborhoods, one, you know, looking really closely at the folks in local government, engaging individuals on a person-to-person basis, an education subcommittee, which is inclusive of youth, zero to five. We actually have first five, that's part of that coalition. Enumerator recruitment, which are those folks I said who are knocking on doors, we wanted them to be reflective of our communities, not just people who are walking around neighborhoods who didn't understand the layout of our cities. Health, so we had mental health as well as clinical health, immigrant language bear subcommittees, LGBTQ, older adults, and people with disabilities, technology subcommittee, because this was the first Census that was going to be online, and then a women's subcommittee, which is actually first of its kind. We've never had a gender lens on the Census, but we know for a fact there are a lot of women-led households that will be the tipping point between filling out the form or not. So we made a special committee for them as well. In terms of the Census in the county, we did create this complete count committee with those different subcommittees. A lot of community-based organizations, I believe we had up to 76 organizations at one point, questionnaire assistance centers, canvassing, phone banking effort, which we had planned. Unfortunately, a lot of that fell through when COVID came through. So we're doing our best to switch more to the virtual platform. We have an internal county plan, so a lot of the county agencies that are, you know, dealing with individuals, tax, you know, hopefully utility bills through city governments, et cetera. We had notices in a number of those different programs. So we've been really making sure that first and foremost, that our county employees are counted, and then when they interact with people across the board, that they are also counted as well. The kiosk system is also in place. I have a slide for this later, but just to let you know that that was curtailed quite significantly because of COVID-19, making sure that they were compliant with shelter in place. We do have a few of them out still in the boys and girls clubs across the county as well, but we're trying to expand that program as shelter in place kind of develops. And so far, it's been looking pretty good, and we're trying to work with partners to make it a bigger and better program. The Census 2020 county program, we tried to make it, you know, a fancy kind of branded kind of campaign. So this is our poster in the early phases, and then the 2020 Census logos, the Count Me In logo, as you see in the bottom right-hand corner, I guess you could say, that's what we've been using on all our stuff, shirts, et cetera. Tried to make it as inclusive as possible and expanding it into several different languages. So we broke down the message as simply as possible. As you can tell, I've already talked for about 13 minutes, and it gets pretty complicated. So we tried to break it down into its most component parts, why it matters to individuals, why it matters right now. And then we did it in several different languages. So we have this, I believe, in over 17 different languages now, just trying to spread the word around why Census is important in the easiest way possible. And of course, making sure that they are culturally competent as well. We have buttons, if you happen to be in a position where you can be on a Zoom call and love to have a, you know, share your rep for Census, love to get you a button. Like I said, the kiosk program was curtailed. We have it expanding in a number of different libraries, hopefully when they reopen at some point in the future, but we'll see. And then, of course, we have our different kiosk paraphernalia as well, that will go on the kiosks, that are on the kiosks, for the ones that are outstanding right now in several different languages, just to try to make it as easy as possible. We have these pens that have a stylus on the other side that you can kind of use and keep yourself, so we can kind of keep it hands and touch-free. In terms of what we're asking folks to do, you know, Kristi mentioned this, join the phone banking effort. We'd love to have more folks call. We have about 90,000 calls we've made so far. We'd love to make it as high as we can go. I'm hoping we can get in the 150,000 range by the end of this. As you know, the Census process was pushed quite far out. It actually was supposed to be done in July, and now it's pushed all the way out to October. So we're really trying to make the best use of that time by engaging as many people as possible. Hey, haven't you not finished up yet? You can still do it even during this non-response follow-up time, when enumerators are knocking on doors, you can still finish the Census on your own if you'd like. If you want to do that in-person thing too, you can do that too. You know, making sure that everyone's families, friends, and neighbors have participated. You know, it's really about trusted messengers, making sure that individuals are talking to each other about the Census. And then, of course, we've got our social media. We're always repping Census. You'd love to look at our Facebook, you know, please join our movement, join our Twitter, check out our Instagram. I'm terrible at all three of those things, and I've got some very smart people doing that kind of stuff, sharing those messages. So if you'd like to join us virtually, that's the best way to do it. Posters as well, we've got lots of different opportunities through the Census Bureau themselves, paying quite well, $30 an hour. We understand that this is a very difficult time financially for many folks. So if you are looking for a job, the Census Bureau is still hiring. So we highly encourage you to get in touch with them, so that we can get as many of our individuals out there in the community. And that's my presentation.
Nick, thank you. That was a great overview and a good call to action for those that are on the call to make sure that friends and family have done their Census and to put stuff on social media. And so now what we'd like to do is to see if any of our attendees have any questions for Nick, any comments, and if you do, if you wouldn't mind raising your virtual hand or putting something in the Q and A. Okay, I have our first attendee, Gary Swanson. And so Michelle will go ahead and unmute you, and it looks like you're unmuted. Go ahead, Gary.
All right, I'm sorry. How do I get, well, I'm on Zoom quite a bit, so how do I get one of these buttons? So I could flash that.
Love to get you one. It's quite simple. I actually have my contact information on the slide, but I'll put it down in the chat window below. Go ahead and email me, we'd love to get you any and all paraphernalia, even to have giveaways as well. For a while there, we even had hand sanitizer, but that was a pretty hot item, so that's gone now. We've got lunch boxes, things like that.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you, Gary. And next we have John. Michelle, if we can go ahead and unmute John. Okay, John, if you want to go ahead and manually unmute yourself, I think you're good to go.
Can you folks hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, listen, I'm new to this business and in terms, I'm a newcomer to Morgan Hill, arriving from the East Coast in 2017. So I'm definitely of an East Coast mentality, but I'm enjoying it here. I'm playing in the Morgan Hill Wind Symphony, I play clarinet, and I can't make this thing work, so I need to do some research on, so that you could see my goofy countenance also. I think this is a great thing to do. I'm glad I checked in just to get a flavor of what the city has to offer us, and thank you very much.
John, thank you so much for joining us. The way that we have these set up as webinars, attendees, their cameras don't go on. It's really for security purposes. So it's not just you, it's not your technology. But we appreciate you joining us tonight. Welcome to Morgan Hill. We're glad to hear you're enjoying it and you're involved.
Thanks, Christine, I appreciate the welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see any other hands up. I'm going to quickly look at the chat here. Nicholas added his email, his county email on there. All right, well, we can share other questions or comments as the evening goes. But what I wanted to do now is just talk about, a little bit about the order that's going to be effective next week, and then we might have callers on that want to understand a little bit more about what happened over the weekend, over the holiday weekend with the ABC. And so I have several of my teammates, as you can see, that are on, and they might want to add to this specifically. We have our city attorney, Dawn Larkin, on. We have our police chief, Shane Palsgrove, on, our economic development director, Edith Ramirez, among many others that might want to add information on our ABC visit. But first, the order that is effective next week. So it's going to allow for more sectors to open up in Santa Clara County. We have found out that Santa Clara County has filed for a variance, which allows the order to become effective and to allow for businesses to open. And so we've been proactive in sending out information to businesses and to the community about what businesses need to do, and there are certain requirements that need to be followed from a social distancing perspective, as well as cleaning protocols. And then forms actually have to be filed with Santa Clara County in order to open. And so some of the different areas will include, we now know, of course, outdoor dining is okay, and we'll come back to that area, but gyms can now open. We now will be able to have personal services, so that's, you know, everything from haircuts to nails. And so I think our community is pretty excited about that. Now, with everything, all these different sectors reopening, you know, what we want to continue messaging is the importance of wearing facial coverings, masks, and social distancing. As we have heard, you know, that is what we have in place right now before a vaccination or immunization is released, and that needs to happen so that we don't have an increase in cases. And, you know, the risk that we have is more people getting sick, and more cases would lead the county and the state to close things back down. So we're going to encourage people to continue with the masks and social distancing. Now, to talk a little bit about what happened over the weekend, you probably saw a lot on social media, a lot on the news, and just to kind of simplify it as much as possible, and we can certainly go into the details if there's questions. But on July 3rd, so the day before the holiday, we had visitors from the ABC, and so alcoholic beverage control. And so they came into our city and made visits to our businesses. They started on the south end of town and then worked their way towards the north end of town. And initially, when they started, there was posts on social media that there were individuals that had visited restaurants that weren't in any sort of uniform, and that weren't providing IDs, and that were holding out to be from some entity. Some people thought maybe it was from the health department, saying outdoor dining is not allowed in Santa Clara County. And so the original social media posts, it looked as though, if somebody saw it, that it was a hoax. And so people initially thought that, you know, something funny was going on. Well, as they continued to make their way south, we specifically heard they called city officials to let us know that they did, in fact, have visitors from the ABC. And the ABC officers were armed, and they were letting the business owners, customers, and, you know, managers and servers, basically telling them that outdoor dining is not allowed in Santa Clara County. And with some restaurants, they asked them or told them that they had to close immediately. With other restaurants, they said that they could finish out the day, but then would need to be closed the following day. This led to, of course, quite a bit of confusion, because everything that had been messaged from the county had been outdoor dining is now allowed in Santa Clara County, and that was as of June 5th, if I have my date correct. And so calls were coming into us with questions, and, you know, so several of us tried to, you know, figure out what was going on. And in the meantime, businesses were trying to figure out, do I stay open, do I stay closed? And so the media got wind of all of this, and kind of fast forward to, I guess it was, yes, two days ago, we found out that Santa Clara County received the variance that they needed in order to open up outdoor dining. That happened just recently. Apparently, the request was made on July 6th, and I believe they received it on July 7th. But all along, we had thought that that had been filed. And so basically, outdoor dining is fine in Santa Clara County. Restaurants are able to, as long as they're observing social distancing protocols and cleaning protocols and so forth, they can be open. And so bottom line is that we have tried to seek clarification, we've tried to seek answers, and we still don't fully understand the why behind the variance and the timing of that, and why ABC decided to come into Santa Clara County. But what we do know, both the county and the state will agree that outdoor dining is allowable. So before I open it up to attendees, Dawn or Chief, did anything that you want to add? Anything that you want to clarify from your perspectives?
Just to, I think the dispute we had with ABC was that ABC believes that outdoor outdoor dining requires a variance. Our reading and the county's reading of the state orders is that it only prohibits indoor dining without a variance. Actually, that's what the orders say. But ABC was interpreting the orders more broadly to require a variance for any dining. And I think the issue was a communication breakdown in that, you know, certainly, we believe, we think every city and county of Alameda believes. And, and I've spoken to all of the city attorneys in our county plus our county council. And we all believed that we were doing, what we were doing was legal. ABC had a difference of opinion. And I still haven't seen an order from the state that requires a variance for indoor dining. But at this point, it doesn't matter anymore because we now have a variance and it's legal.
Chief, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, very well said. I would just add that ABC got these orders from the governor's office late on Saturday. And so they were rushing to conduct the enforcement, which is the reason we were given as, for not being notified prior to them going out and making these contacts.
Okay. Separate from the ABC issue, anything else on the new order that our team wants to share with our attendees?
One thing I would share, you've already said it, Christina, but, but I'll reiterate. The number one factor in the new orders is, is mask wearing. And it's, so it's super important if we want to keep our businesses open and we want to keep our businesses functioning and we want to keep them out of trouble, is we do our part and wear masks whenever we're in public. I think that's the quick, it's, it's built into every single aspect of the new orders. The orders essentially remove sector-specific compliance. So in the past, it was every, only certain sectors were open and they were only partially opened. And, and what the county is saying is that essentially, anything, almost any business can reopen with a few exceptions of things where it's impossible to wear a mask and or socially distance, but almost everything else can be opened as long as customers and patrons and employees are wearing masks and, and socially distancing from people in other households. So there's, you know, it, it opens a lot more up, like, you know, we can now have backyard barbecues and we can have a lot more social interaction than we've been able to have, but it's all dependent on us complying with those mask requirements. So they're important. And I know our businesses would appreciate it. And our police department would appreciate it, and all of us would appreciate it. If you wear your masks, it'll save us a lot of headache.
Yep. The other, oh, go ahead.
I'll just add that the police department has received over 230 complaints. And we've received compliance after education on each incident. So we still have not issued a citation to date. So we very much appreciate everybody's cooperation and following the order.
So the other topic that I wanted to just mention before we opened it up is, from the weekend, is related to fireworks and the fires that we had. And so Chief, will you share, share with the attendees approximately how many calls for service that we, that we had? And how many citations did we have?
Yes. We frankly looking for my.
So while, while you, while you look for that, sorry for putting you on the spot. We had, we had several fires, of course, this weekend. And we have Cal Fire that, that provides fire service for the city. And Cal Fire, our, our fire chief in particular has five different counties in its unit. And over the course of the weekend, at one point, there were 12 different fires that they were involved in. And so there were three fires sort of in South County. And the, the, the biggest one right now that's still, that's still going is the Cruz Fire. And last time I checked, it was over 5,000 acres and I think 50% contained. That might, that might be updated since. And then we had a, the Park Fire, and that was on the east side of the Anderson Reservoir. And in addition to that, we had a fire at Butterfield and Fisher. And that was about five acres and that did take down a structure behind you, you save Rockery. They're all under investigation and so we, we can't say what the cause was yet. But our fire teammates and with the police, with the help of our police department, we're very busy and continue to be busy. That Cruz Fire is in the unincorporated part of Gilroy, but pretty close to, pretty close, close to Morgan Hill. And I see that Dwight is on and he may want to share with us. And before we do that, Chief Palsgrove, do you have info to share with us on the fireworks?
Yes, the fireworks, we received 113 complaints. We issued 17 citations. And to give you a snapshot of how busy our dispatchers and officers were over the Fourth of July, from 5:00 PM to 5:00 AM, dispatch took 473 calls. The same time last year, they only received 193. That's almost a 60% increase. And of the site, 17 citations for fireworks, all of those will be aggressively pursued and prosecuted because we've given out several warnings and provided lots of education years prior, leading up to this year's. And with the fired up, with the multiple fires that were going on, the sheriff's department and CHP both exhausted all of their resources to provide evacuations, traffic control, and called upon Morgan Hill Police Department to respond, to assist them with some evacuations of structures that were catching fire in the county jurisdictions. So fireworks were a huge problem. They not only caused a lot of property damage, but they could have taken lives as well. And so we are taking fireworks violations very seriously.
Thank you. Dwight, anything to add?
You've already covered it pretty well, Christina. We had a very busy weekend within incorporated Morgan Hill. Between July 3rd and July 5th, your fire department responded to seven fires. And we administered another six law enforcement type citations for fireworks-related activity. And we do have some tired people. We are standing strong. And we're hoping to wrap up the Cruz Fire, which is east Gilroy. We're hoping to wrap that up by Monday or Tuesday. It's holding at 5,400 acres.
Just a little bit on the penalties for fireworks. About, well, last year, we amended our municipal code to make fireworks violations under our municipal code a misdemeanor. And what this means is two things. One is you can be prosecuted criminally for the municipal code violation, not just a penal code violation. And the penalties for a misdemeanor are up to $1,000 and six months in jail. In addition, I'm going to be recommending that we conform to what many other cities in the state are doing. And that we increase our administrative fines to $1,000. Right now, we were at $100 because they were an infraction. We passed an ordinance tripling those fines during the Fourth of July holiday period to 300. That hasn't had as much of a deterrent effect as we would like. So I'm really recommending we increase those penalties to $1,000.
So bottom line, in the city of Morgan Hill, all fireworks are illegal. And so that includes what, you know, would be considered illegal, just generally speaking, for fireworks. But it's also the safe and sane fireworks that you can buy in our county in Gilroy. Those aren't allowed to be set off in, in Morgan Hill. Okay, so with that, go ahead and raise your hand or enter anything in the Q and A. And I do know that we have in the chat, Swanee Edwards, that would like to speak. And so Swanee, if you could raise your hand so we know which number to unmute. Okay, Michelle, I think we have Swanee. And if, if we can get her unmuted, and Swanee, go ahead.
Swanee, I think you're going to have to raise your hand on the phone you're calling in from. You can do that by dialing star nine.
She has, her name is showing up now.
Yes, when she calls in, she's connected two ways.
Ah, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to post a link to a petition that we are doing to support AB 3005. This is a bill from Assembly member Robert Rivas, who is our assembly member in District 30, where we live, to fast track the Anderson Dam retrofit project. And this means that this bill would allow us to fast track some federal requirements and permits, as well as some local permits while maintaining environmental protections. And we're not sure if legislature will be opening back up next week or not. But we would love to have you go to the, to the website, to change.org. It'll lead you right to our petition and sign it. And that would help us hopefully get this bill passed. It already passed the assembly unanimously. So it needs to go to the Senate. And our Senator Bill Manning is a co-author. So he will be voting for it as well. It's so important that we get this project underway and make the improvements so that we can refill our dam and provide additional flood control for Coyote Creek. So we'd really appreciate it if you could do that. And I'm having a little trouble posting it in the chat. I think I need, I have this unmute button, so.
Swanee, if you'd like to email it to me, I can post it in the chat if you're able to send it in the next few minutes.
Perfect. I'll send it right over to you. Thank you so much. Thank you guys for letting me do this.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a question coming up in our chat. How can the fireworks response be improved in the future? Only a tiny percentage of violators are ticketed. The threat of fines are ineffective as a deterrent if people are not caught. In my area, my neighbor received a warning. It was lighting off fireworks moments after the officer left. 17 tickets out of hundreds of calls doesn't work. And I know Chief Palsgrove is ready to answer that question.
Yeah, I think, I think that with the increased penalties, that hopefully that will be a deterrent. We put extra patrol teams out on the Fourth of July. They were instructed to have zero tolerance for fireworks. Now, depending on what they saw and what they knew and what was reported to them, might have prevented them from being able to issue a citation. But in the future, I think with more education, more people being cited over time for the fireworks, that it will slowly reduce. I know that our fireworks in Morgan Hill ended a lot earlier than just about, if not all other jurisdictions in our county. And so I do know that the message is getting out there and people are not lighting them off or using them as much as other cities.
Thank you, Chief. Questions or comments? You can enter them in the Q and A or the chat or raise your hand. Next opportunity to engage will be our July 15th council meeting, followed by our July 22nd council meeting. And I see Josephine Voe with a hand raised.
Hi. So I just wanted to ask a little bit about, like, I'm very happy to, that our restaurants have an opportunity to, you know, do, do business and, you know, and all of the small business owners that we have in Morgan Hill definitely need that because we, they don't think we are getting enough aid federally. But I just wanted to ask, so is there like any, like, is it, so there's been an increase in cases recently in Santa Clara. So that's like making me concerned, you know, like that the risk is actually increasing rather than decreasing for people to go out, especially like my older parents. And so I just wanted to know, like, you know, are there any other mitigations that the city has been tossing around? Like, I know some cities do, like, they, they shut down streets on the weekends or something so that they can allow people to walk and, you know, go to the shops, but like be further apart from each other. Yeah, so that's just where my concern was.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. So I'd first, you know, would share that, yes, the case counts are going up. And I think the county would say that, you know, it's, it's sort of twofold. One is that there's more testing. And so as you test more and you test people that don't have symptoms and some that do, your, your case, your cases are going to go up. In addition to that, I think that there also is the evidence that there is community spread as well. And so you have sort of that combination effect. Now, the new order that's in place from the county, it's, it's been clear that this order will be in place for a while. That it's still a shelter in place order, but it does allow for more sectors to open up in a safe way. But that more, that areas that are of higher risk aren't able to open now or in the foreseeable future. And the guidance is still to stay home, you know, other than, you know, going, doing, you know, certain things. And then especially, as you mentioned, for those that are at risk, specifically older individuals, that the, the guidance is to stay home because the risk is out there. And so as far as, you know, other, you know, sort of ideas, what, what we've done in Morgan Hill is really been a proactive approach with our businesses. Our economic development team, led up by our director, Edith Ramirez, spent quite a bit of time working personally and individually with our businesses, you know, not just calls or, or, or emails, but going out and looking at the needs of the restaurants and looking at how the restaurants could push out into public spaces. And, you know, to really expand the areas where they can serve people. And, and so that has been, you know, put in place. And you probably, if you've been through downtown, you can see that the K rail, K rails have been set to allow for some of that outdoor dining space. Team, anything else that you would sort of add to, you know, what we're doing here in Morgan Hill that, you know, sort of kind of helps out? You know, we're excited about the stuff opening, but you know, Josephine's question is, you know, yeah, this is great, but we're still concerned because COVID is still a lot, you know, alive and is a concern. Anything else that I didn't cover?
Well, the one thing I would add, I think that you're absolutely right. The county's best guidance is still to stay at home as much as possible. They're moving from a risk elimination or risk reduction strategy to a risk mitigation strategy. So which acknowledges that there will be potentially some more risk involved in, in the activities that we're allowed to resume. I think it's just recognizing the fact that people are going to be resuming some active level of activity. And if they're doing that, they need to do it in a safe and, or should be doing it in a safe way or the safest way possible. So the order is very much focused on being outdoors, distance and with masks so that, so that when you are doing those things, you're doing them. It's not a risk-free environment, but as safely as possible.
Yep. Okay, so our next question is coming from the Q and A. What's the reasoning behind not even allowing safe and sane fireworks like what are available in Gilroy? And, and so if Dwight, if you're still on, I'd love for you to address that one.
Thank you, Christina. Does come up once in a while. For clarity, in Santa Clara County, the city of Gilroy is the only city that even allows safe and sane fireworks to be sold. It's actually in limited areas. Santa Clara County is heavily, heavily engaged in the wildland. And there is an inherent risk in virtually every single community in Santa Clara County. There's a severe risk of wildfire. And fireworks are a very obvious ignition source.
Thank you, Dwight. Okay, so looking at our chat, I think we had a couple additional things there. Do we know if the Cultural Center's preschool is going to be open for this November's calendar? Public Services Director Chris Gioni, anything you want to share at this point?
We're still reviewing the order for preschool. I just replied to that in the chat. Sorry, it was a little slow.
Oh, got it. Okay.
And if there's parents, they can, they can contact us or if they Or if they want to give me their email privately in the chat, I can have our preschool director contact them. But we're still trying to determine next steps for that program.
Thank you. From Kristen, the proposed Anderson Assembly Bill that the lady discussed, Swanee, would, what would be the timeline? How much faster would the project be finished? Is there an additional cost? What is the website change.org and does it explain the details? Chris, are you able to share anything about the timeline for Anderson and how the bill might impact the project?
Well, the, the, what the bill will do is help get through the upfront permitting. And I think while has been advertised or discussed by Valley Water, the project would be up to a nine-year project from this point. With that bill going through and potentially other streamlining from the federal government, it could reduce the, the length of, of time that the project takes. But right now, I, I haven't heard that there's an estimate by how much or how quickly that could change it.
Okay, thank you.
Christina, if I may?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's important to remind the community that the dam is going to be drained starting this fall.
Correct.
So really, there'll be no safety concerns. Getting the dam rebuilt as soon as possible becomes a water supply concern. And this bill would really tell the regulatory agencies, particularly at the state level, that they should treat this as a very high priority in processing the permits.
Yep, thank you. And change.org would have more information. And it's just a general website that people can go to to put petitions in place. Okay, so it looks like the next question is, or comment from Josephine Voe. So takeout is still the way to go for at-risk groups. I hope we can emphasize that we should still shelter in place if we can. And is there a way, is there a fund we can donate to to help keep our wonderful local businesses propped up? So I do know that the chamber is working with Visit Morgan Hill on a gifty program. Edith, are you able to speak to that at all?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And so appreciate the question because if we know anything, and especially after what happened this weekend, these businesses are really trying to survive on a day-by-day, hour-by-hour basis. And of course, my son is just going to like come in and, and show up at the second one.
He's welcome to. He's welcome.
We are actively putting together a program with Visit Morgan Hill and the Chamber of Commerce to do a shop local campaign to support the businesses. So that is going to come out in the next couple of weeks. Okay. Hold on a second. That is going to come out in the next couple of weeks. So thank you, Josephine, for asking the question. I'm going to remove my camera. But we are, we are anxious to support that. We actually are putting together a couple of programs. One that is specific to a shop local by local campaign that is going to be more than just a branding campaign, but it's actually going to have some bells and whistles, some bells and whistles as far as tangible stuff for the community to, to be able to support local businesses. And the other one is going to be to further enhance the alfresco dining that we are doing, not just in downtown, but throughout the city to support these businesses that are so struggling to just even push out and create more space that as we know is much needed to, to be safe. So we want those, that, that alfresco to not only be able to push out, but to be able to remain because we don't know how long this is going to take. So this, this might be the new norm for us. So thank you for the question. Stay tuned. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be launching a full program with many opportunities for folks to support businesses.
And Edith, there's also the Morgan Hill Community Foundation that has a new fund that's been set up. It's a disaster relief fund. And I believe that the proceeds that, you know, are donated to that will go both to sort of residents in need, but then also a percentage would go to businesses.
Yeah, we have, thank you Christina. There is a number of efforts. So in addition to the ones that, that I mentioned and the ones that, that with the community foundation, also the Downtown Association had a, a program where you could sponsor and you can buy gift cards from, from a local business. And there's other partners that are willing to support stretching those dollars. So we do have a couple of things going on. We're hoping to package them because again, we're looking for, for a long runway here that we're getting ready for. And hopefully, we're going to have one house where folks can come in and figure out what is right for them and how they can, they want to support the businesses.
Great, thank you, Edith. Okay, so we have a question. Is it true that one positive COVID-19 test result could add up to 16 positives through contract, contact tracing as per the latest CDC guidelines? Is that combined with more testing resulting in the explosion of COVID-19 cases? And I think, I, I, I saw a sort of a graphic and a, a piece that kind of shows how what you're describing can happen where one individual gets, gets COVID and how it can be passed on to several people. You know, so I, I don't have anything specific to sort of add to that. You know, there are, each of the counties now have contact tracers that as soon as somebody is positive, you know, they help figure out who that person exposed. And, and so that, that, that's happening, you know, throughout the county and other counties. Anything else for my teammates on that? Okay, so Swanee, I see that you responded to the question about Anderson, that you have additional information and the bill language and be happy to send all information that should help answer your questions. We can email Swanee at S W A N E E at garlic.com and she'll be happy to forward the information. And I do see that we have a hand up, which might be Swanee's. I'm not sure. So if we can go ahead and unmute.
I, I did have to speak briefly, but I put it all in that message I just posted about Anderson. I actually have the, the bill language here as well as other communications from Valley Water. I, I am the District One Water Ambassador for South County. And this is something I'm terribly passionate about is getting this dam rebuilt, increasing our discharge pipes so that we don't ever have water running down a spillway again and flooding our neighbors in San Jose. So feel free to email me if you want additional information. Happy to give it to you.
Great. I totally appreciate that. And, and the city is certainly in support of, of the Anderson project. And, you know, both of the staff and the elected level has been working on this project for quite a while. So I believe that concludes our evening tonight. Our next town hall will be on Thursday, July 23rd. So please join us for that. And with that, have a wonderful evening. Take care. Thank you, Nick, if you're still.